I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Aye.
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 Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I believe that we approve the consent agenda, second.
Aye.
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 Public comments, Trump's David in your free mouth. What's your mouth?
Oh, there. Got a question for you guys. Are we allowed to contact city attorney? There we've been, has the city attorney been told not to talk to citizens of Grand Junction? The reason why I'm asking that is back in November, I brought some stuff up to council. I was told everything was fine. I had further questions, contact the city attorney. I have contacted the city attorney in November, December, January, numerous phone calls, and have not got any kind of response back from him. Not a phone call, not an email, not anything. So, curious if we're not allowed to talk to our city attorney. Don't know if anybody wants to address that. Probably not. The other question I had, before last winter, we were supposed to get a couple loads of the railroad gravel or rock in front of our house because of the giant pond that's out front there. We did get one load when Brett was here. Talking to you, Jerry, about some more. Nothing else has been good. Can't even park there right now just because I realize the snow winter, it's wet, everything is. But just wanted to figure out how we can get on to a schedule at some point when rock thaws where we can get another load out there, we can hopefully fill that in.
What are we talking about?
Right there in front of our house in the city area between
Well, we sure don't want to put railroad rock there. We're going to have that in the lawn every time we try to mow it, then big rocks.
And snow lawn areas, all dirt dry.
Well, it's on the other side of that sidewalk, it's all and that's what'll happen with the kids there. They get kicked over in there or get knocked over there and then you're you have problems with mower.
Didn't have any problems last year when it was put down there. We got a little full load and we packed it in the whole
I for one would not recommend doing that at all, those big rocks.
The whole deal was it was do it, put it in there. We compacted by driving back and forth all the time, which it was done. Another load was going to get put in and originally that rock was put on top of it, so.
I'm just saying, I'm not for it.
Okay, then you don't live there.
We don't have any. No, we don't have any.
You don't, you don't want to go. Railroad, you don't know, no, use.
I want to make sure that, um, I'm, you guys are going to answer, so I'm just going to put it out there that media's coming to people and asking and people are giving it out there. And I hope they all realize, and this, not to you, sir, I apologize, that this is all going to come out. These meetings, these private meetings that you have, we've had to go to senators' offices, we've gone to, and it's not just the, uh, the council. It's other people in town that are seeing what we're doing. It's okay for you guys to do it, but not for other people. Park your vehicles this way, move this this way, take signs off that aren't, that one don't belong to and you have to back, but ones that you put on to advertise your, your building or your business. And the other thing is, if any property in this town does get changed and rearranged to now commercial, which was residential, I would like my piece of property as well to be zoned commercial. And my neighbors don't seem to have a problem with that. So that's, I would like that put up as well. But these meetings that you guys seem to have a lot of, more so than mo- most towns. Why is that? Why is that? That doesn't, and again, you're not going to answer and that's okay. That, that's why no one expects anything from you. The privacy now is expected. So it's sad, but one by one, it will be fixed. Little by little, it will be fixed. And you don't get to say things about women, horrible things about women and get away with it. It doesn't work. It just doesn't work that way. So, and, and that is for council. I just want to make sure that that's completely understood and the media all the way around understands that. That it's just not okay. So, thank you for listening.
Anybody else?
You all say that you're available to us anytime, anywhere. I've called since December twenty seventh about a complaint. Nobody has returned my calls or my emails, and I even talked to two city council members about it. I do not think that what I'm asking is above the city code. And then I have another question. I mean, because I've even called the city code officer, left several messages, and he sent me a certifiable letter to a property I don't even have any ties to over the last three and a half years. Now, that's not a waste of taxpayers' money? I just think that's very vindictive of somebody to do that to me when I'm only asking what you promised us up here. If you have a complaint, if you have some suggestions, call us, let us know, get ahold of us. You can get us, all of us at home. But yet, not one of you has ever called me back. I've only talked to the city clerk lady. And another thing is, I'd like to know exactly what our city officer, what his job is entitled. Because you also put that in the newsletter we got at Christmas, like the first year that you combined two jobs and you think it's working so well for you. I don't think it is. And I know a lot of other people in this town do not think so either.
Well, there was a mistake made on the letter that got sent to you because the address was wrong. And I think that was taken care of.
No, it was not. He sent me a certified, and I signed for it.
Anybody else?
Two.
Um, I'm just curious as to, um, how certain people have got letters enforcing city code when I know there's council members out there that don't follow city code, they don't get enforced on them. Uh, for one, there's, uh, city code, I'm pretty sure, enforcing your dog's house at least. And I don't know how many times I've gone down a particular road, I won't mention it, but I've been chased by their dogs down the road on motorcycle. So, something happened to me. Is that, is that on you guys? Or, or what happens there? If I hit that dog and then die, then I'm on a motorcycle?
You've reported it?
Well, I haven't reported it, but it's city code. Uh, no one's reported all the the other stuff that letters have gotten out for. I don't believe, I mean, some would sure, but not all of it. No.
People have reported what they're talking about, none has ever been done about it.
Well, we don't feel
Is that, did we, we went to the next one or, were you done?
I don't know, yes.
New buildings. Vote to approve grant for the street project.
Law. Um, trying to get a, Grover Green County, and I just need to have it on the minutes. Approved by you guys.
We have applied for a grant for the rest of Main Street. We would like to get the whole thing. We probably won't, but as much as we can get, we would like to work on the west part of Main Street that didn't get fixed. So we just need to approve it in the council meeting so that they have the approval.
One oh four. Is that the total cost?
Yeah.
One oh four.
Hundred and four is the, is the total cost. We don't know how much we'll get, but we, you can ask for whatever and get what you get, so.
And we're really just voting on?
Good for saying.
We're just really voting that we can do the grant. We want to buy a turner. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the grant for the street project.
I second it.
Aye.
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 Vote to approve grant for pool accessories.
Yeah, we also put in a grant, um, to Grover Green County Foundation for some accessories for the swimming pool. We are asking for removable stairs that can help a lot of people. The ladders are just tough as you get older. Um, and also for people that, um, have little kids, it's hard to try to figure out how you're going to get down the ladder and keep this baby from jumping into the pool. And then also, um, we're trying to get two new lifeguard chairs for the pool. So I make a motion that we
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How much are you asking for?
We are asking for total project cost is eight thousand eight hundred and forty-seven.
Okay. I have a couple questions for you.
All right.
I've had people ask me, um, they are interested to know how much the city actually spent to have the pool open for two months last year. Do you have any?
I can't.
How much the city spent?
No, I mean, we, I think it's been established long before this council came on that the pool is not a money-making venture in any stretch of the imagination. No, no, I know. I, um, and so I, I don't have any idea. It, it wasn't our hope to have it open for a shorter period of time, but.
Um, and any idea how many people you average a day attend the pool?
I cannot tell you that. I'm sorry.
Well, I would like this year to know how much the pool costs the town to have it open each month. And I'd like, also like to know a total of how many people attend every day. I understand we don't get, it's not a money maker. But I think we're reaching a point where can our money be spent better? If we're only getting twenty kids a day at the pool.
I hear you and I totally understand that, but I am not for a second going to take on closing down that pool. I'm, it's, it, I won't, I, I, that's pretty much a mission that they will hang you for, and I don't want to do that.
Well, here's the thing. In this town anymore, you've got older peo- you've got more older people than you have kids going to the pool.
Right.
So what benefit is it for the older people in the town to have the pool open? You know, if we can get exercise classes for the older people maybe to go down there and we can see some kind of advantage with, for them.
With the stairs, that's what we're hoping. I mean, the stairs are going to give easier access in and out of the pool. And we've already flung out ideas of water aerobics, Zumba, whatever you want to call it, adults-only type of thing. And so this is kind of step, no pun intended, step one in getting, working on this. We have a couple different people that have can teach that we've approached, and so we're just going to sort of go with that.
I, I totally hear what you're saying, believe me. I hear it a lot from a lot of people, but kind of what else does this town have for the young people?
A library?
Okay. Valid point, but I think when we're talking in terms of what's fun, if somebody says, geez, you want to go to the library for the afternoon, or hey, do you want to go to the pool?
There's games there, there's
I don't know that that's apples to apples. I, I just don't, I, I, I am a firm believer, I love the library, you know that, and I love the pool, but I'm not sure that if we get apples to apples here, it's not quite the same.
I hear you, but I'm going to tell you we can't operate that pool without knowing what it costs us and how many people we are servicing.
And so here's the deal, we can certainly give you that information. I guess, um, I don't
At the end of this season, I want that information.
Just a second, I don't know.
You would like to have the information?
But just a second. I don't know that we have this information, like the number of kids each day from last year. Did they keep track of that? I don't even know.
I think that they do, but I don't, I'm not.
Well, then let's do it this year.
So, yeah, we can
And then when we close the pool at the end of August, we'll know what the pool cost us.
Right.
I mean, I don't want to close the pool, but there comes a time.
There comes a time, and, and I'm just throwing out there for anybody that's watching or listening or whatever, I'm not crossing that bridge. I, I will not, somebody else can, can take that job on, but I'm not crossing that bridge. I won't do it. I just won't do it. I, I get it.
But we can get this information
Yep.
at the end of August or September and
Yep, we'll figure out a way to keep it.
And, and let's look for ideas to get more people in the pool.
Right.
Let's see about having pool parties and things like that.
Right.
There was pool parties there. You can rent it for, I don't remember, we rented it once, twice.
Well, let's, let's vote for this stuff.
I think I already made a motion, didn't I? Or you did?
I, I made a motion to approve the grant that we have applied for.
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Vote to approve grant for the tractor quick attach.
At, yeah, attention.
Um, Jake, I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant application to Grover Green County Foundation for tractor attachments for this new tractor. The gravel forks from the front for, help with the cleanup for the trees. And, uh, blade for the back and a quick stack, quick attach. That's it?
When we looked at that, I had that on there when I brought that down.
But that doesn't mean that we don't need charge for it.
Right, yeah, they have it.
What's that grant for? Do you know, Jake, the grant for?
It's any place from three thousand.
I think Rod has it.
Rod, you know how much that?
Yeah, I know it was on there.
How much was that grant?
Yeah. We've got it in the office.
I second what you said.
Aye.
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 Vote to approve, I want to bid on a grant for paint for the pool.
Right. Um, I stumbled across a grant in looking for grants one day, and Diamond Vogel Paints um, has a grant out there that you can apply for through the Paint Iowa Beautiful um, promotion and they will, if you are accepted, they will give you X amount of gallons of paint. And I thought that the outside of our, um, pool house down there is looking a little ragged. If we could get free paint for it, I'm all for painting it. If, if we don't, you know, we don't, but why not ask and see what you can get? So I make a motion to get the okay to apply for this.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.
These are all applications for the grant.
Yes, and all we're doing is just so that everybody knows that we've applied for stuff.
Vote to approve to send Rod to CPO course and write, write a check for it. This is not a grant course application.
You have to have that order of the ordinance waiting for you.
We have to have a certified pool operator. We're, we're proposing we send Rod. I make a motion that we send Rod to the CPO course, write a check, get it paid for.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. And we will have him sign the same paper that we had Brett sign that says if you leave early, then it's paraded to pay back and all that.
I thought you was going to do that.
I thought, I thought you approved it with him.
We did. With him, we said, okay, we're going to adjust that, and he helped us close down the pool in the fall. He's going to help us bring the pool up in the spring and, and show us things that needed done. That's how we worked that out, because it was a
The certified pool operator goes down daily and helps us with that. That's not something Brett could do, but to other new job.
Yeah.
Vote to formally authorize and appoint well, that's getting pretty Paul Hoskerson to assist city clerk with the ARPA grant report. I thought you were already helping her.
Well, we're making it, we're making it official. Do you want me to jump in here? Okay.
You make it.
So that everybody understands what this is about. I was researching, going through the twenty twenty-one um, minutes of the meetings to find out where we stood on the sewer, lagoon, all that information, because kind of felt like the ball had been dropped on that. In researching that and reading the minutes, I see in, um, September where it says that the ARPA grant money was received, the first amount, there was no amount listed. Um, Wendy and I started trying to research to find out how much money we got, what it was for. Couldn't tell anything about it. Ended up at that point calling the State House, found out that in August of twenty twenty-one, and these are all because of COVID, we got money from the federal governments because of COVID. We got in August of twenty twenty-one, a check for fifty-seven thousand, five ninety-seven and sixty-five cents. In November of twenty twenty-one, we got a check for a hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. I don't know why it was that little. And then in August of twenty twenty-two, we received a third check of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-one cents. That was setting in our, like, local auction sales tax account, setting there. Right. And so with this, what has to happen, um, I called the League of Cities, that's who I was referred to at the State House, and um, the legal guy at the League of Cities said, if you don't report on this money, they will send you a letter and you have to send it back. And by the time you get the letter, it's too late. The first report should have been done by April of last year. The second report has to be done by April of this year. And, um, what, um, we are going to say that we use the money for, because it comes to a hundred and fifteen, hundred and fifteen thousand, five eighty-one, twenty-three. In September of twenty-one, we also transferred money with a resolution and everything. We transferred money from the sewer fund to the street fund to pay for the repaving of East Main Street. The problem is, we have a lot of projects coming up with the sewer fund that have to be done by twenty twenty-four, according to the DNR. And so, um, what, what this resolution is, it's to help allow me to do these reports, help Wendy, since she's overloaded with some stuff, do these reports, send, get them sent in so that they don't ask for the money back. The other thing that I found out is you have to say what you use the money for, which streets would be fine. But the other thing is, is every year by the end of April until, including twenty twenty-seven, we have to send the same report to the federal government saying, we use this money for East Main Street. For the, and I said, are we getting more money? And they said, no, that's all you're getting, but you still have to report it for the next however many years to make it okay with them. So that's what that authorization is for.
Okay, and this is on a resolution twenty twenty-three, dash, zero, two, one, three, dash, zero, one.
I believe we approve it, the resolution.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
So then
I'm going to abstain just because
Then I need to make a motion that we formally authorize a point poll to assist city clerk in this project?
That's the one.
Yes, and
Is that all the resolution or is it two separate ones?
The resolution is also to say that we are using this hundred and fifteen thousand that we got in these three payments for repaving of Main Street. Even though it was already done, you have to tell what you were using it for. And so that's what that resolution is for, right, to use it. Um, it, well, there's, there's one resolution, the other, it's to appoint me, vote to appoint me, and then the resolution is for the money to be used for that.
Okay.
So did that, that pass?
Yeah, just a second, that, yes, it passed, okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, and everybody is okay with how that is? Okay.
Vote to waive right to review platte survey from property being purchased by Alain Energy.
So I got this survey, um, from a surveyor for Alain Energy that's wanting to purchase land. It's two miles outside of town and we could either approve it or waive it. Um, I checked with our attorney, he said
Who, who property is it, the conflict is?
It could be a conflict of where electrical lines are drawn, or this conflict can only go this far. And you can't be in somebody else's territory. I think it's out there at the substate.
I think it's not going to go out.
It's not by the ethanol.
Okay.
Dean checked into it.
Yeah, Dean, Dean checked into it, and then he had his attorney check, or the, the light plant's attorney check into it, and we're
There's a law, but if you're in so close to the city, you have to, we have to approve one of those.
Right, so
So it's
Do you have a question? I, I will make a motion then to waive the right to review the platte survey.
Second.
Aye.
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 Is, who's our supplier here, you know, is it Alain or somebody else? For Grand Junction?
We have our own.
No, Grand Junction buys it from somebody.
I don't think it's Alain now. It's somebody in the company.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know.
Vote to approve getting renewal or reseal or not to reseal for the city clerk.
Yeah, I want to make a motion to approve getting a renewal or a seal for the city clerk.
Second.
Aye.
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 Vote to repay a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars borrowed from the sewer fund in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I want to make a resolution to pay that back.
That's, that's not a resolution.
Make the motion.
A motion to pay it back. Because we're going to need that, all the money we can get in the sewer fund soon.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Can you just do that in-house if you have to make a formal piece of paper to show back for on that, make you do that fund back? Seem like I've read somewhere that you're supposed to charge point oh one percent or something like that.
We have to charge it to our own
No, but it's all in-house, it's not done through a bank or anything?
It is, I was not on council at the time, but there was a resolution made to borrow it within our city from the sewer fund. And then it was supposed to be paid back yearly, and of course, we were all new city council. We didn't make the payment back last year because we didn't know about it, but in finding this money that we got from COVID, then that should push us close enough to be able to pay it back. And then we have been paid back from FEMA. And so that should put enough money out there that we can get our sewer fund paid back.
Contract doing that, is there make it legal with the government to charge point oh one, which is nothing percent?
I, I believe that I read that in the minutes. I don't know, I guess we can call the attorney on that and find out if, if we have to.
You say you did it, so it's a paper trail.
Right, and that's, that's why we're doing this.
She's just wanting that paper trail to make sure.
For the, for the money. So you mean, are you saying do an ordinance and, or a resolution?
No, well, when you pay it back, it, I mean, kind of like a note, kind of, you know?
Okay.
All right, it's an in-house deal, but there should be a paper trail.
Interest on it.
Or whatever it comes up to.
Okay, okay.
If it's required.
Okay, we can talk to the attorney, because I thought that this was what we needed to create a paper trail.
I mean, nobody's game is that.
Right, right.
I guess a phone call.
Yep, we'll do a phone call. Yep.
Clear that.
Discussion concerning cleaning of snow from sidewalk.
I think you skipped J.
Yes, skip, yeah.
Did we vote?
No, it's.
We need to do J.
Yeah.
Good, good.
After I. Before K.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, good thing.
Vote to approve G Works project team to assist Wendy with the account balance.
Okay, so I've been running into problems trying to get the books all figured here. Um, G Works is our accounting program. And I made several calls to them. They say we have a total mess. Um, so I am making a motion.
You can't make a motion, but you can tell us.
Or asking you guys to make a motion to have their project team come in and do what they need to do. So I can start with a clean slate and not be totally overwhelmed.
Okay, questions? What's this going to cost us? Um, they charge 142 an hour. And any idea? We have no idea how many hours it's just going to take.
We don't, we hope not many.
I'm trying to get as much stuff entered as I can, so it's going to make it easier for them. Okay, so we're going to pay them. Are we still paying the gal up in the gallery?
Only if we use her and we're not using her.
Okay.
Right now.
She's definitely like PRN, like just as needed. We don't keep her, we don't pay her, she doesn't work.
Okay.
And how many hours are we using Mary and Ripley at this time?
She's only here probably maybe one or two nights a week.
How many hours?
Not very big patients.
Not, yeah, not more than an hour and a half usually.
Okay.
And the, the thing is, when you balance your checkbook at home and you have an outstanding check, you just keep carrying it through to the next month till they do the check. With this system, it so messes you up. It doesn't allow for you to keep bringing that outstanding check forward without screwing up how you're balancing. That's the problem.
Yeah, and it needs to be cleaned up.
Right, it does. And it's.
Screwed up this for what?
Well, that's because we had to go clear back for over a year.
And it's not letting us on the phone with these guys for three hours before. Yeah, let's get it done.
Yeah, yep. So, somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approved G Works project team to assist with the account balance.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Way out of. Do they physically plug your computer in?
No.
Or you sign this paper?
You turn your computer over to them on the other end and they come in and say.
Okay. Mickey, snow.
Yeah, gang, we, we didn't have our nuts in row, like we thought we did. When we voted, well, we didn't vote, but we said, let's put the ordinance in about snowing. And it's a mess. It's, it's a mess. And we've talked to the Lake of Cities, we've talked to our attorney. And the ordinance stuff we have, not the best. And they've recommended that we need to look at it and we need to change it. And so that's what we're going to do. Now, having said that, I want to put this word out. Calling City Hall and saying you and your husband are not physically able to remove the snow is not going to excuse you in the future for removing the snow. If you sit at this table and you own businesses or you own property that has sidewalks, you too will be asked to remove the snow like everybody else in the town. We need to have clear sidewalks, so when our kids walk to school, they're walking on sidewalks and not out in the street. We're lucky we haven't had somebody else killed. So we're kind of giving you a pass right now until we get the new ordinance in about cleaning sidewalks. We only had half the people clean the sidewalks anyway. And brought one around and counted. And I don't understand this down. I, I just don't get it anymore. Why is an ordinance for everybody but you? Why do you think you get a break? I don't care if it's sidewalks, I don't care if it's dogs, I don't care. Whatever it is, don't you have pride? Don't, don't you want your property to look nice? Don't you want safety? So, having said that, and believe me, I've heard a lot about the sidewalks not being cleaned. And you can come and talk to me again about it, but at this point in time, it's moot until we get a new ordinance. That's all I have to say.
The other thing that I will say is, obviously, if you have a business on Main Street, we're out early trying to clean it. Um, and if you have somebody that stops such as to get your hair done or, or whatever, and the car is there, we will go around it. And next time we make a pass and they're gone, that's all we can do. We just don't want it sitting there for, you know, all day, whatever. We're going to do the best we can to keep it clean and we understand that.
And I have two more points to make, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Another thing I want, city property needs its sidewalks cleaned. And if we have somebody that owns a business and they do not clean their sidewalks, especially around the library, they still need to be cleaned because we have old people that go to that library. And my final point is, we had somebody in a truck, we don't know who, cleaned part of the sidewalk, go down the sidewalk with the truck and apply. I had one of the business owners tell me that. We're not going to come up with that crap anymore.
What are we going to do on, I assume that the place that you're referring to, by the library?
Yeah.
Um, are you talking about the old?
Yeah.
Globe office?
Yeah.
So, so we're supposed to clean that then?
Well, you're right.
And, and do what?
And then whatever the cost, this is what the new ordinance is going to do. We're going to put the cost plus a fine on the property taxes. And we're going to let the property.
We're going to have to come up with a new ordinance and let the new ordinance, and then, yeah.
Um, yeah, and I, I don't know, we're at a point this year where obviously we're kind of too far into it.
That's what Mickey's saying, and it's like.
Yeah, yeah, this year is, we're kind of.
We are admitting our fault. We're admitting we, all as a whole council, let it go. We're going to, before next season's snowfall, this will not be an issue.
And hopefully, we're going to have the ordinance and we're going to let it be known in the fall, this is what you people need to do. And if you can't clean your sidewalks, I get it, you got to find somebody else to do it. So, okay, now I can finish up.
So we're going to table this one, this discussion, and hopefully come back with what we have to do to change the ordinance and that sort of thing. Do we know what we have to do to change ordinance? Do we all know what the ordinance is like by? I mean, I don't want to wait until next August to try and discuss this. I don't want to wait until.
Well, let, let's get started.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, let's get this moving until like by next meeting, we have a, we have another discussion about it, you know, by next and until.
I, I had talked to the attorney and I talked to the League of Cities Legal Department. Part of this is actually an Iowa, an Iowa code. But part of it, there's a, it's, it's really convoluted on the understanding of the ordinance. Um, it just, it just doesn't make any sense the way it's written. It's hard for anybody to understand. And so, um, they both said something needs to be done with it. But part of it is an Iowa code. So that's where we're running into problems.
You might want to talk to the town of Jefferson. I personally know that if you don't have it cleaned off within, I mean, 48 hours.
Right. The, the problem being, we can assess it to your taxes, but if that property goes into foreclosure or if that property changes hands before we get this put on your taxes, it's a wash. We get nothing.
So we need to figure out whoever the landlords are that sell the house and hasn't got their money and someone believes that you can go back on the original owner of the house.
Right, but if it, if it changes hands beforehand, we're, we're done. So that's something to keep in mind on some of those.
We're going to be out a chunk of change, you know, upfront. And then hopefully we get it back like at tax time.
Three to five years maybe.
Or when the house sells or possibly doesn't or whatever. So you got to think about a financial game plan to make this work also.
Right, but we can, we can, you know, figure it out. Everybody bring ideas at some point and figure it out.
We need to take a look at that ordinance and figure out which part of it is the Iowa code.
Right.
And which part of it is just our piece of the pie.
Right. Okay.
How far behind are all of this stuff sitting in our attorney's arms? How much, how much stuff have we got sitting over there waiting for him to do?
Are we down to the mayor part of, are you, or are you asking me?
We're down with the mayor.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Um, we just got the, um, information on the 28E agreement that the. Dude, I, just that quick, I lost my train of thought. Um, on the 28E agreements that the different, um, or. Thank you, townships, boy, that was hard. Um, that the townships have met with the county attorney on, we got the 28E agreement. But I had called him on a couple of questions that I had and it, it's just got a lot of holes in it at this point that kind of need to be talked about. And he hadn't even had a chance to read it yet. So that's why it's not actually here. I think everybody has it in their folder. But we don't want to vote on it because it's not ready yet.
Okay, one more thing. Has one of the rules, he wants to, it's my turn to talk, you can say something.
Can I have one quick question? Your ordinances are written by Regency 12, correct?
I, uh, okay.
That is who writes your, writes your ordinances. Regency 12 is bound by Iowa law to follow Iowa law. So if one of your ordinances are illegal by Iowa law, it cannot be illegal or if it is illegal, it has to. Even though you have your ordinances, state law overrides your ordinances no matter what. So from what I'm reading in your ordinance book, all your ordinances need to go back and be looked over. Because a lot of them are illegal. They're, they're trying to supersede the state law, which is not applicable. You cannot do that. You have, you can have your ordinance law, that's fine. But state law overrides your ordinance no matter what.
Thank you.
I think that's kind of what we said.
You need to check more of your ordinance.
Whatever the Iowa law, we had to keep that.
Right, right, yeah, we know, we know on this, we've got, it's a mess. It's just a mess.
Okay, thank you. Moving along with the council guy.
Yeah, yeah. Last, last month, we talked about an agreement for nonprofits to use the little room. I made up a service agreement, I gave you a copy in your, do anything. I only had one person reply that they wanted this hot changed, so I went ahead to make that change. I just want to know, is this okay? Can I go ahead and have the different organization sign it?
I haven't seen the change.
I gave you one tonight.
No.
Um, Mickey, yes, Mickey. So, let's just say the nonprofit here, the basketballers. One time, fill us out or does there, does this just like, I want to use it every Tuesday at nine o'clock? So then it's one time.
It's for regulars.
Right, but let's just say every Tuesday at nine o'clock.
We could do that, we could do that.
I mean, that's okay, this is cover for.
Huh?
Here, and, oh, um, I was just curious, I was, I, I don't have a problem.
You know, I've already had somebody tell me tonight that we're getting cigarette butts outside the building. So I'm going to visit tomorrow with that group. Um, and you'll see here, if, if, if we have problems, if they can't do the housekeeping, they're banned for six months.
And I think this is great, you have the housekeeping rules.
Yeah.
Like, here it is, this is it, and I think that's fine.
Just do that group.
Yeah, I'm going to tomorrow.
I, I think this is fine, Mickey, thank you.
Okay, anybody else, any other comments?
I see that rule.
Okay, thanks.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
We didn't, we're not voting. I don't care, we're all good.
Okay.
And then the council?
I do have something. Um, we were, I shouldn't say we. Wendy had gotten an email or had gotten email about RagBri that RagBri, this particular person was wanting to rent vendor space here that maybe we were going to. I called Matt Piffin, who is with RagBri, talked to him just to find out what we're up against. I've been involved with RagBri coming through before and it is a huge undertaking. But this is what he told me. Grand Junction is not on the support route. So that means we do not need to be prepared for 550,000 bicyclists. Um, he could not divulge, give out the, the exact route, but he said he would be shocked if we got any bicyclists that would come as far into town. So I don't believe we need to plan for anything. According to him, we did not need to plan because I said, how many kaybos? You know, how many whatever do we need? And he said none. And so I'm just letting that out, that I followed up with this and that is what I found out, so.
Thanks for doing that.
Does the general map that got printed out?
Well.
That's just a general map.
That's just a general map of this is where, this is what, this is the sleepover, this is the sleepover. But we know for a fact they're not going to drive, they're not going to go up Highway 30, you know? So I, I even said, now Highway 30, old highway comes at one end, we're right about us on new highway, you're going to cut over like at Leo Kirby's. And he, he said Junction is not even on the support route. So we're not, we're not supporting RagBri, not that we wouldn't, but we aren't this year, so. Anyway, that's what I want everybody to be aware of.
I have, I was just going to say that we did receive our last FEMA payment for $48,325, so, and they're closing out the accounts then. So we got everything back that we were supposed to.
Was that because of trees again?
Yeah, that was from the 2020 windstorm and that encompassed all that. So, yep, we're good to go there.
Judy, you got anything? Kenny? Street maintenance combined. Library, I got, I believe everybody got this. Any questions?
I don't think so. Yeah, we got the fire department thing also.
I, I want to remind everybody tomorrow, the special election. So be sure to get out and vote.
And they, I, I did.
What time is the vote, is that?
Eight o'clock. I think it's seven, I think it's seven.
Seven, seven to eight. And I thought I did say, I thought I did read someplace that if you can't get out of your car, that if you call, they will come out and let you vote in your car, so.
I know they did in your morning, but, yeah, that's.
Anybody from the fire department here?
We, um, yeah, he, he, he left the record, so we've got it. So, is that it?
I make a motion to.
Yeah, I don't like, know how many physicals they're getting. Are they doing all of them at once or are they stacking that?
So many now and so many a couple of years later, how, how that's working?
I think you better talk to Brett. I mean.
I mean, he put it in here, but he didn't say.
Right, but I mean, I think if you want to know if they're staggering them and how many, I mean, is there every five years, does it say?
Right.
And so, I mean, not everybody's due every, you know what I mean?
Right.
Because they all joined at different times and I think they would have had. I think.
We don't want to have to hit you all at once. We don't want twenty, twenty physicals all at once.
Right.
I think they did say too, I don't get, yeah. I think I did a bill hearing that. Yeah.
And I think that when you join, you have to have a physical to join. And because not everybody joins at the same time, that.